Our Father, who art in heaven, as a body we congregate in this council chambers, pray for thy divine guidance that we may do all things well according to thy holy will. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, eternal, infinite, everlasting.
Mrs. Williams, please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Here.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
You.
Mr. Kelch.
Here.
Mr. Donardo.
Here.
Mr. Brayden.
Here.
We have six members present and one absent this evening. Move on to amendment of the agenda. We don't have anything to amend this evening. Item F, minutes of previous meeting, minutes from September 22, 2020. Mr. Brayden.
Motion to accept the meetings as read.
Motion, Mr. Brayden, may I have a second? Mr. Donardo, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Oops, sorry.
Clark.
Goodness, sorry. My sheet is messed up today. Mr. Gabbard.
Here, yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
Six members present, voting aye, motion passes. Item F, minutes from October 13, 2020 meeting. May I have a motion? Motion by Mr. Geraci? May I have a second? Second by Mr. Donardo, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye, motion passes. Moving on to item H, request to address council. We have one request this evening. Pastor Sonny James.
Pastor Sonny James, 1830 Hopkins Avenue, Norwood, Ohio. Want to first extend a heart of concern and care for not just Norwood residents that are battling with COVID, but everyone throughout our city of Cincinnati, as well as those across the state of Ohio. As we continue to see the numbers spiking, our first concern obviously are for those few. Even though the numbers might be few in Norwood, they are still rising as we get our reports from our city school. We are finding that COVID is hunkering in, and so we pray for those that are dealing with those issues. Second of all, I'm so pleased that the country seems to be de-escalating at the conclusion of our election. And no matter what side we're on with it, the reality is that people are beginning to feel like there's some hope just because of an election. So that encourages me because we soon will have another election coming up. And so I will be, as I have been behind the scenes, but I will be now more aggressive than ever because the issues that surround people of color are so important that you can see, you know, when it's hard for our city leaders to even say black, or if you have city leaders that only acknowledge a haircut, but can't acknowledge the other things and the other works that you do, or if you have a bout with mental health. It's so easy for peers to gather and put things on paper, but yet when a resident is confronted with a firearm, we still don't have leadership that even sends a letter about that. And that's very concerning and very frustrating. So we will continue behind the scenes for this upcoming election in Norwood, and I'm really believing and trusting people of color are going to stand up, show up and show out to finally say, black lives do matter and the black vote makes a difference. I also want to encourage the residents that have, for whatever reason, jumped on a bandwagon to be against people. You know, I've got broad shoulders. I don't scare easily. I don't scare at all, in fact. But I've been around and I've been hearing, and I know when we come against each other like Mr. Geraci, it seems like there's a lot of energy coming against individuals because of personal choices. Well, for the record, I don't, I don't stand for that. It's not a matter of black and white anymore, people. It's about being honest, being truthful, and being loving, and trying to support each other on all levels. And so those of our residents that are looking at the nation now, I want you to take a look at our city leaders, and it's very clear that those that work well with agendas of everybody, they work well. And those that don't, it's crystal clear that they don't. I want to challenge all of our leaders, though. When you see something wrong, and when you see somebody doing something wrong, flat out, I want to encourage you to be bold enough because one person can pick up a chair. What happens if you have ten? Or like I recently experienced on the street here in Norwood, what happens when someone has a firearm? Guys, I'm, I'm here to love this community just like all of you, but we've really got to start by loving ourselves. On January the 15th, we are going to have a citywide march, and I already have hundreds of people already ready, so they're coming. But it'd be great if we could be, if we could have our Norwood residents, a march of unity, togetherness. There'll be children out front because it's all about the future. It's not about me, so you all can stop saying, "Well, it's not the sunny show." No. God bless you all. Keep striving to be the best you can be. God is watching. God bless you. Peace.
Thank you, Pastor James. Moving on to item I, one, reports of standing committees of council. Streets and Infrastructure Committee report, Mr. John Brayden.
Thank you, Mr. President. To the Honorable Council of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we, your Streets and Infrastructure, to whom was referred, a discussion regarding signage and painted stop bars, traffic calming, street plan, and current street work and repairs. Beg leave to submit the following report. Dana Bold proposed, and we discussed her ideas, on street signage and painted stop bars at Elsmere, Floral Lexington, and the Wasson Way access area. Discussed speed humps and their benefits in helping calm traffic on Quatman and Cartridge Avenue. Mr. Geraci provided a quick approximately, approximately $20,000 for temporary speed humps that can also be moved to problem areas as needed. The topic of Cartridge Avenue being a state route was addressed and difficulty that may entail in applying speed humps there. We agreed that we should begin to reach out to ODOT to initiate the process, to get their input. We discussed speeding and traffic calming in several areas. Warren and Worth were discussed. Mr. Murphy advised us that we have a couple more patrol cars added in hopes to be able to address more traffic violations. We all agree that rerouting the traffic on Ash and Marion would benefit, would be beneficial in that area to limit the volume of traffic. We will put out a public announcement for further discussion for the residents in that area in the near future. Mr. Murphy gave an update on the timeline and plan on prepping for the Indian Mount Streets project, as well as completing Cathedral and Shanmore Street work. He informed us that WSP Engineering is assessing our streets and will provide us with a report to move forward with a comprehensive street plan. Mr. Murphy also provided us with photos and information regarding the expansion work being done on the Orkin Bridge, known as Section Avenue Bridge. The bridge is in terrible shape and expansion joints are cracking. A bridge company provided by state is doing the largest part of the work, but the bridge will need redected, which is our responsibility, and it's estimated to cost approximately $2 million. Respectfully submitted, John Brayden Chairperson, Mr. Geraci, Mr. Kelch, and Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the report be received and filed.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Mr. Geraci?
A second.
Second by Mr. Geraci. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye, motion passes. Moving on to item I, two, committee of the whole report. To the Honorable Council of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we, your committee of the whole, to whom was referred, discussion with Brandon Atwood, President of the Norwood Board of Education, two tax levies, and three, update on report on accounting methods. Beg leave to submit the following report. Council met with Mr. Brandon Atwood, President of Norwood Board of Education. Mr. Atwood asked for an update regarding the donated playground equipment at Allison Elementary. Mr. Kelch reported that the city would try to use the equipment, but did not have a location at this time. Mr. Kelch thanked the Board of Education for their donation. Mr. Atwood reported to council that in January 2021, there will be an interactive for health, student-based health center with a nurse practitioner and a dentist. The center will service students, staff, and the community. The center will be located in the old nurse's office with its own entrance. Mr. Atwood also reported that the Board of Education is working with the Norwood Health Department and have created DART, Data Assessment Risk Team. The group is receiving a broad range of data, including drilling down to Norwood and to Norwood, and active investigations. Additionally, the group is receiving the number of COVID tests per day, percentage of positive cases, and number of cases per 1,000. Second topic was the tax levies. Council discussed the renewal levy, which generates approximately $1.5 million annually, and if, if it could be turned into a street levy. General consensus was that the renewal levy is needed with general operating expenses. The third and final topic was an update on the report on accounting methods. The progress has been made thus far. An updated spreadsheet was provided to council. The Corps of Counsel will send a letter to department heads for additional updates. Respectfully submitted, Ken Miracle, Chairperson, Mr. Bonzel, Mr. Donardo, Mr. Gabbard, Mr. Geraci, and Mr. Kelch. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would move that the report be received and filed.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Motion by Mr. Bonzel, may I have a second? Mr. Donardo, any discussion?
Yeah, real quick. Just to kind of put on, I guess, this floor, that we did end, I think, the committee meeting on the topic of the accounting method stuff. I think we were hoping to just make sure that every, because we're doing a committee of the whole every month, that that maybe just be a standing agenda item until complete. So just to kind of make that clear and hopefully a commitment we all sign up to.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Donardo. Anyone else? Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I did want to note that the Treasurer Tim Maloney did stop by and talk to Mr. Miracle and I after that meeting. And I think there is some confusion on exactly which items are complete and which ones are not. And I know that Mr. Miracle had committed to reaching out to him, but the Treasurer kind of gave us a follow-up update on, you know, where he's at, statuses of items. So it definitely looks better, and I'm sure that the other departments too, potentially, that there are updates that the financial supervisors gave us that don't tell the full story of like all the work that's happened. So yeah, I think at our next meeting, I think we'll have more information, but just want to make that note that, you know, there's more, there's more to come on that, and it looks like there's more progress than we originally thought.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Anyone else? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye, motion passes. Moving on to item I, three, Economic Development Committee Report, Mr. Michael Gabbard.
Date at 11:42 to the Honorable Council of the City of Norwood, Ohio, we, your committee, your economic development, to whom was referred Joseph V. W. P. U. D. Beg leave to submit the following report. Presentation was presented by Jay Andries, is that how you said it right?
Andrus.
Andrus, from the Wasson Way Board. We heard some comments from Mr. Tim Maloney, the Treasurer, regarding estimated taxes and incomes that the city gets from that particular dealership. We heard from members of the community in regards to it to just start getting some people's ideas and thoughts on the proposed site. The committee expects to have the Joseph Group to a committee meeting soon to give their presentation of the proposed site. Respectfully submitted, Michael Gabbard Chairperson, Mr. Donardo, and Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. Gabbard. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that we receive and file the report.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. May I have a second? Mr. Donardo?
Yes, thank you.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye, motion passes. Moving on to item I, four, Law Ordinants and Human Resources, Mr. Matt Geraci.
We did not have a meeting this week. We were going to have myself and Mr. Gabbard, absent, so we canceled the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Bonzel?
I would move that we amend the agenda to remove the law ordinance and human resources committee report.
Motion by Mr. Bonzel to remove the law ordinance from the...
Second.
Second by Mr. Brayden. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye, motion passes. Moving on to item L, introductory readings of ordinance and resolutions. Item L1, ordinance amending, ordinance number 40-2020 to correct two numerals referring to fund numbers of appropriations for the year 2020 and declaring emergency. Mr. Bonzel.
I move we have all three readings of the ordinance.
Motion by Mr. Bonzel to have all three readings. Mr. Donardo, second?
Second.
Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye, motion passes. May we have all three readings? Mrs. Williams.
Ordinance amending, ordinance number 40-2020 to correct two numerals referring to the fund numbers of appropriations for the year 2020 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance amending, ordinance 40-2020 to correct two numerals referring to the fund numbers of appropriations for the year 2020 and declaring an emergency. Ordinance amending, ordinance number 40-2020 to correct two numerals referring to the fund numbers of appropriations for the year 2020 and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the ordinance be passed.
Motion by Mr. Bonzel. Mr. Geraci?
Second.
Second by Mr. Geraci. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Mr. Donardo?
I guess it's just worth noting for anyone who saw the agenda, that there is no financial impact. This is just changing the numbers of the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Donardo. Anyone else? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. Donardo.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present, voting aye, motion passes. Moving on to item M, administrative reports. Mayor Schneider.
Thank you, President Miracle. Couple of things going on. I think most of you already are already fully informed of what's going on with Shanmore and Cathedral, the repaving, all the concrete work that's being done. John is staying on top, Safety Service Director John Murphy's staying on top of that. He's been out there with engineering, and they've reviewed some of the work. There's, there's actually an engineering tech that's monitoring that process and working closely with the Safety Service Director on that. And the amount, my understanding is that they will start concrete work, which means catch basins and, and other abutments to the street will, will be started. And I think that they're slated, their goal is with good weather to be completed by the end of the year with that type of pre-work. So that's, that's, that'll be a big accomplishment and actually well ahead of the schedule that we'd originally anticipated with some of this year's delays. The engineering, street engineering study was, was talked about. We did put in grant applications for three more streets that are on our FRP, on the plan to be paved for next year. We'd like to get that all squared away and in place and actually started sooner. The only thing that, that holds us back from starting our street pavement, repaving program earlier is really the funding. The funding doesn't become available until July. What we can do is have all our ducks in a row and make sure that when that funding comes through, that we, we've already got it, let out the bid, and everything is ready to go, and all we've got to do is sign on the dotted lines. And that will be our goal, is to try to get that completed earlier. We are also looking at trying to do that, the $100,000, the Montgomery Road Improvement money that you guys approved at the last council meeting, we hope to have that going early spring, as soon as weather breaks, start working on that stuff. So our, our goal really is that when we get into the fall, most of this paving work is completed, and the city's all cleaned up and looking good again, and then we start the process all over again. Tom Perry has continued to work on the Elm Avenue Storm Sewer Project. He's, he's working on grants and, and trying to get involved with, there's, there's a couple different federal agencies that we've got to get the right information to the right people at the right times, and he's, he is really working hard. It takes a lot of effort. You would think that, you know, it's just a matter of putting some information in the computer and moving on, but it's getting to the right people and the right information and the right system, and then following up. So it's, it's a, there's a myriad of, of just challenges with getting all of that done, but, but we will continue, and we do feel like we'll be successful. The new ambulance arrived, so we are looking good with our ambulances. We're, we're in pretty good shape right now. We do have a COVID-19 ambulance, which is much like the other ambulances that we have, but it has a higher filtration system. There's some other things that are involved in there. That, that will be coming in before the end of the year. So our EMS services are really in great shape. We received two new police cruisers here recently. They're, they're online and on track. I think if you go past, past the police station, if you look, we've got some, we've got some nice looking police vehicles there. They all look brand new to me, but they're not all brand new. And we have, we still have quite a few of them that have way more miles than they should have on them. The fact that our guys are, are taking care of them, our men and women in blue are taking care of them, is, says, says a lot about, you know, their, their level of professionalism, but they do have a lot of miles, and we got to continue, continue with that replacement. We, we still battle the basement, the water leak in the basements, so we've redid some concrete work around the exterior where it was directing water, basically right around the foundation walls, and we feel like that's going to make a, a big difference in that. I don't know if any of you, I don't think we really use that conference room in the basement very much because of the water problems that we've had in there. But we hope to have that completed and all taken care of so that we can reactivate it. Health insurance for employees, the open enrollment went out, we had negotiations, the insurance committee's been meeting, we were meeting in here with all the city employees insurance committee. That starts November 16th, and this year enrollment is being completed. They actually, Norwood has an enrollment center, a telephone number that you call, and they walk the employees through and try to help them capture the best plan that fits their family or their needs. What we've heard in the past is that some employees signed up for a certain, a certain insurance, and then, you know, two months later, they find out, "Oh, I'm paying more insurance," or "I've, I've got this cart, you know, I've got this huge insurance plan, but I really don't need it." So we're, we're trying to give them more information so that they can make good decisions. And then it's important for us to have all those insurance numbers together for the budget for next year. So we're, we're working to get through that. It's, you know, your HR department at your company normally takes care of that. I know, John, you've got a big HR department with your company, but I never realized how much time and effort has to go into the enrollment process, you know, but it's, there's just so much effort that has to be put into that. We do have some, some good people working with us. Haran has been working with us for years, and they've got really some great experts that have been helping a lot with that. So I think we've got a good offering for insurance this year for our employees, and I think it's a good, good benefit for the system, for the city also. The Board of Health, there's a Board of Health meeting yesterday that I attended. COVID, of course, is always a topic of conversation. We, they're, they're working hard. There's more cases now that they're tracing, and their contact tracing is going strong right now. But they, they continue to thrive and do well. Vaccinations are going on for flu, you know, flu shot vaccinations have already went through. I think all of the city employees have had it offered, and the ones that have taken advantage of it have, have already did that, but they continue the flu shots. And, you know, the, the other part that you, you have to realize is the Health Department is not, it's not just there for COVID, although, boy, they've been spending a ton of time on COVID. There are a lot of other things that the Health Department does, so they're, they are still, continue to work and do those things. One of the things that was interesting at the board meeting was the Health Commissioner was talking about the vaccination and how vaccine, COVID vaccinations can be completed. He's been working with the fire chief, and we're looking at setting up a mobile vaccination clinic, a drive-through vaccination clinic, and doing some things to really bring that resource to our community members and other community members as quickly as we can. So really trying to be the Boy Scouts, trying to be prepared, so as it comes out, it's no more of a matter of just tweaking the system that we sort of have in place instead of trying to throw everything together. So I'm, I'm really inspired by the work that they're, they're doing because they, they're really paying attention to it and trying to make sure that when it does come out, they, they're flexible enough to make it happen for us. I did notice that TEC, which is a traffic engineering company, was out at Sankar and Montgomery Road. They had the boxes open. That is part of a, a traffic study, traffic flow engineering study that they're doing through ODOT. It was an application that Tom put in, and we've been successful in getting that. So they're doing a study of, of traffic synchronization and all the systems, all the way down through, and then they will come back to us with recommendations. You know, if you, you think about it, sometimes you're driving down Montgomery Road and you end up stopping, and you're like, "Why did I have to stop here? There's no car on either, there's no, no reason for me to stop." And, and so they're going to look at the ways that we can make the traffic flow a little better. And it has always been, and I know in the, your, your committee, you're talking about, you know, traffic calming. If Montgomery Road is flowing well, if Montgomery Road is the preferred route because you can get from point A to point B quicker, that pulls cars off of our residential streets, and that's what we want. We want to pull them up to the Pike and let them go from north to south on the Pike, not north to south going zigzagging through all of our streets. So we'll see, we're trying to do that. And then we also have a pedestrian safety study that is going on by ODOT, and that's another one, trying to look at what do we need to do to improve their pedestrian safety. One of the things that I keep on hearing is how big of a barrier Montgomery Road is from one side to the other side. You know, if you, if you're walking across that and you're going to take your time, it takes a long time. So looking at how we can do some stuff there. So those are, those are items that are going on. There's a lot more going on at City Hall, but I don't want to make the meeting take more than 55 minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Schneider. Mr. Brayden?
Question for the mayor through the chair, please.
Yes, sir.
So, wow, what, I mean, that's a whole lot of stuff you just went through there, man. A whole bunch of stuff getting done, man. Appreciate that. I also appreciate the Norwood Police Department taking such care of them, police cruisers. That's awful nice of them. But if you mind, if you don't mind, can you discuss some, there's some people upset about the trees being torn, being torn down on Indian Mount. Can we talk about exactly why that happened? Because, you know, if we try to preserve our green space and we plant more trees, you know, people get, people get really offended by that. So can we just talk about why that had to be done? And has no one, you know, just please?
Yeah, if you walk down my street right away, you'll, you'll see there are trees that have grown up into the sidewalks and trees, the roots have grown up in. And over the years, trees do get, they get to the end of their life expectancy. The ones that are at the end of their life expectancy are the ones typically that are, have pulled up the curb and have messed with the street, tore up the street because of their root system. So a lot of those trees that have been removed are ones that were designated by the engineering group to say, "This one is going to mess with your project in the future." So I, I understand what they're saying, and we don't want to take trees out. We're planting trees all the time. I planted two trees in my house this year. It's, it's, we're planting trees all the time. What we need to do is make sure that in the future, when we finish this project, that we go back through and that we plant smart. We plant the right trees, and we make sure that we re-force that area. So it's, it's a necessary evil. I'd much rather have the trees, but if, if they're causing problems to the road surface and to others, then it's a...
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Schneider. Mr. Donardo?
Yep. For the mayor, please. With the COVID vaccine, I know that we're in incredibly preliminary stages. With the COVID vaccine, I know that you're in incredibly preliminary stages. That's an understatement. But is the mindset or the lens that the Health Department is looking in as they prepare for whatever the distribution's going to be, to prioritize or focus on the Norwood Health Department delivering vaccines to Norwood residents? Or is that kind of, are they allowed to prioritize that way? Have you thought about that at all?
That wasn't a discussion as of yet, and I don't think it will be a discussion. The discussions are around, and those are, it's a good question. You think like, well, are we taking care of our own first? But then do you take care of people that are, that are have, you know, immune sickness and weaknesses that, that need it? So I, I think that's all going to come out from the, the Ohio Department of Health will, will be doing that. And how the vaccines come out. Right now, there's, there's one vaccine that has to be cryogenic, it has to be so cold and you have to keep it in the refrigeration system and you can only take out so many at a time. There's another one that has to be heated up that needs to stay in an oven. Then there's also the thoughts of, well, the vaccine is going to be in two stages. So you come on, you know, this, the first week of the month, and then you need to come back on the third week of the month. And quite frankly, if you miss your third week of the month, then you've got to wait, you know, a certain period of time before you get the first vaccine shot again to try to do the series again. Those are the, the items that we're looking at or that the board is looking at and the Health Department. Because those are, those are some of the things that are, that are variables that we potentially can prepare for. But how the vaccinations go out and who gets vaccinations first is not something we're even close to yet.
We're going to think about letting the state handle that, that, those mandated things.
I'm sorry.
You're going to think about letting the, if I heard you correctly, the, the how or who gets it is more going to be a state.
It'll be mandated probably by the, the Department of Health. And, and they'll sanction, you know, what, what levels and what people, how it works that way. I'm not sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, just a question, Mr. Mayor. Well, so Martha Teppe alerted me today about just all of the yard signs, I guess around the Board of Elections area. And I think a lot of them are on private property. I didn't know if you, was there a plan for how these things are going to be getting rid of? I mean, I'm sure the landlord should probably be counting for some of that, but I just didn't know if you had any plans. Is the city crews going to go out and just remove that at some point or?
Well, my understanding is that the Board of Elections paid rent on the land across the street or some, there was some, there was some arrangement made. Now maybe Safety Service Director Murphy has a better understanding of how those signs would be removed, but that's private property and the landlord, the, the property manager should be removing those signs.
Gotcha. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anyone else? Any comments, questions for Mayor Schneider?
I agree, get those signs out of here. All of them.
Thank you, Mayor Schneider.
Thank you.
Moving on to item N Unfinished Business. Do we have any unfinished business this evening? Any unfinished business to discuss? No? And we'll move on to item O New Business. Any new business? Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. So Deb Robeson alerted me today, or yesterday, to a grant opportunity. It's pretty competitive, it's a national one called Safe Routes to Parks. And it's through the Safe Routes Partnership and it's safetroutespartnership.org. Anyway, it's a $12,500 grant that nonprofits can apply for. Applications are due by December 18th. And with the applications, there has to be some kind of letter of support from the city of whatever project that this nonprofit, a nonprofit's applying for. So I sent an email to a few people that I knew, but, and I CC'd a couple of council members like Mr. Kelch and stuff, but I don't know everybody, of course. So if, if you all know of anybody that might be interested in that, please let them know. It's just safetroutespartnership.org, there's information on that. And if the city can help at all, or I'm sure that, you know, I'm sure that we would be happy to assist there. So again, safetroutespartnership.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Mr. Geraci.
I'd like a letter sent to the mayor and Safety Service Director requesting that monthly updates on the nuisance ordinance be added to the administrative reports, just so we can get an idea of how this ordinance seems to be working month by month.
Thank you, Mr. Geraci. Any other new business this evening? Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. So kind of, I just wanted to thank Norwood residents for a very successful election season. This was our first election season where the Board of Elections was in Norwood and it caused a lot of inconvenience for a lot of people. I think we got used to pretty quickly not driving on Wall Street for a while, just going around. But there were nearly 80,000 people that came to Norwood to vote early. And then there were many, many more that came to drop off applications and stuff. So from everything that I've heard, people are, people that haven't been in Norwood in a while were probably surprised and, you know, impressed with the city. So just want to thank everybody for being patient on there and, you know, as politicians, I think we like having the Board of Elections close. So when we find, uh, find, excuse me, file our reports, we can do that, but not always the most convenient thing. So we appreciate your all's patience there.
Thank you, Mr. Bonzel. Anyone else? Any other new business? Thank you. We'll move on to Communications. Communication P1. Mrs. Williams.
Letter dated November 3rd to 2020 to Mr. Ken Miracle, President, and members of the Norwood City Council regarding Mayor's Court fines. Enclosed, please find the report for Norwood Mayor's Court for the month of November 2020. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me. Sincerely, Victor Schneider, Mayor, City of Norwood.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the communication be received and filed.
Motion by Mr. Bonzel to receive and file. May I have a second? Mr. DiNardo. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson. I'm sorry, Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, motion passes. Item P2, Letter from City Auditor James Peaston.
Letter, letter dated October 30th, 2020 to Norwood City Council. Dear Council Members, this letter is to let you know that October monthly financial reports were emailed to each council member on October 30th. If you have not received said email, please let me know so that I can verify your email address and also get you a copy of the reports. Sincerely, Kelly Brown, Account Clerk, Auditor's Office.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Bonzel.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the, excuse me, letter be received and filed.
Motion by Mr. Bonzel to receive and file, second by Mr. DiNardo. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, motion passes. Moving on to item P3, Letter from Safety Service Director John Murphy. Mrs. Williams.
Letter dated October 29th, 2020, Norwood Department Heads, New Accident slash Injury Report. The Health Department has modified the old form to include a new line on page two that requires an acknowledgement that all required safety equipment was in use. Please do not use the old forms. The new form will be scanned and sent to you and forms are included in this memo.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Brayden.
I'd like to make a motion that the letter be received and filed.
Thank you, Mr. Brayden. Mr. DiNardo.
Second, please.
Second by Mr. DiNardo. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Mr. Bonzel.
Yes.
Mr. Gabbard.
Yes.
Mr. Geraci.
Yes.
Mr. Kelch.
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo.
Yes.
Mr. Brayden.
Yes, ma'am.
All members present voting aye, motion passes. Item P4, Letter from Tim Maloney Treasurer. Mrs. Williams.
Letter dated October 26th, 2020 to Norwood City Council. Dear Members of Council, attached is the bank reconciliation for September 2020. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me. Sincerely, Tim Maloney, Treasurer, City of Norwood.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. DiNardo.
Would you like to receive and file that letter?